Good evening, everyone. I call to order the January 2nd meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals at 7:00 PM. For the record, alternate Commissioner Judy Cleary will be sitting for Commissioner Paula Sweeney, and alternate Commissioner Christine Doolin will be sitting for the seat vacated by former Commissioner Renee Gibson. I'd like to recognize Mr. Solhavy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, due to some extraneous circumstances regarding the agenda, I would actually move that the public hearing stand in recess until such time as we elect a temporary chairman per the administrative agenda.
I'll second that.
Sorry? Roll call for a vote? This is Solhavy?
Yes. Everybody put your name tags up on your desk.
Sorry, I can't see your name tag. I know you do.
Usually, usually this is done for us.
Yeah. Mr. Poison?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Doolin?
Yes.
Ms. Cleary? Unanimous.
Thank you. With that in mind, now that we are in our administrative session temporarily, Mr. Chairman, by unanimous consent, the committee has, the members would like to actually postpone our organizational meeting until February 6th. So I would make a motion that we suspend the rules in order to postpone the meeting to, of organizational meeting until February 6th.
Second.
Second. Take another vote, Mr. Solhavy?
Yes.
Mr. Poison?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Ms. Doolin? Ms. Cleary?
Yes.
Unanimous again.
By the unanimous consent of the board members, the organizational meeting of the zoning board of appeals has been postponed until Tuesday, February 6th. Before the proceeding of the public hearing, I will now open nominations for the election of a chairman pro tem to preside at today's meeting in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, Chapter 15, Section 4711.
I'd like to nominate Chris Solhavy to be chairman pro tem.
I second that.
The name Chris Solhavy has been placed in nomination. Oh, we have a second? Any others? Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Last call, any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, all in favor of electing Chris Solhavy as chairman pro tem, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chris Solhavy is unanimously elected to serve as the chairman pro tem.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody's consideration for the little gymnastics we had to do there. Just so everyone is aware, the reason we had to do this is that there is two issues. Commissioner Paula Sweeney was not able to attend tonight, and as mentioned, there is still a vacancy on the board due to Commissioner Gibson being elected to the town council. That seat is vacant. The council has not yet appointed a new member to take her place. So what we felt is in the interests of fairness that we would wait until we had a fully constituted board in order to hold the organizational meeting so everybody could vote for chairman, vice chairman, and the adoption of the rules of order, and that will take place on February the 6th per the action of the commission tonight. As we're in the public hearing, I will call the first petition, 249 Wigwam Lane, petition of Elizabeth Morgan seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 4.2 of the front setback requirement from the required 25 feet to 13.2 feet in order to construct a one-story addition to this existing single-family farmhouse located in an RS3 district, RS3 zone. Hardship stated is pre-existing, non-conforming structure on a large, unique-shaped lot. Zoning regulations make further development extremely difficult. Is the petitioner or the representative present? Okay, please approach the podium, give us your name, address, and tell us what you're planning on doing.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Cuevas. This is my mother, Elizabeth Morgan.
You could pull it.
Is that better?
Yes.
It'll tilt down.
How's that? We're all good? Okay. My name is Jennifer Cuevas. This is my mother, Elizabeth Morgan. She lives at 249 Wigwam Lane, and she is seeking approval of a variance to add a single-story, one-room addition to her existing home. And the house was built in 1903, which was well before the zoning was put into place.
Okay. Those are the certificates of mailing? Yes. Give it to Ms. Cleary, please. Okay. Just hold on to it. Do you want? Okay. Okay. Any questions from members? Or anything, or anything further you wanted to state on your proposal?
That's it.
Okay. There you go. Let me just grab this quickly. Sorry. A little bit of chaos this morning. Okay. Just make sure I didn't have any questions. I looked through this this morning. Okay, well, if there's no questions, then I guess then you're all set.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You should probably ask if there's anyone here to speak.
I will, yeah. Yeah. I was just gonna say, you can take a seat, and I would just ask, is, are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of the petition? Please come forward.
I'm in favor of the petition. I just had one quick question.
Send it.
When they surveyed, and they put the pins down, do I need to talk to somebody just to confirm that the pins only represent the southern boundary of the property?
Mr. Brennan? Can you? I'm sorry, would you be able to state your name and address?
Yes. Greg Rico, 40 Putituck Path, Stratford, Connecticut.
Can, can you repeat that? The southern?
So, they did a survey, and they did it along the southern border of the property. When they did the survey, the pins that were closest to the east and, eastern and western line of Lot 2, which is my lot, they looked like they were tighter. They didn't look like they were measured for both the southern border of the property as well as the eastern and western. I just wanted to confirm that.
That's something.
You know, those pins only represent the southern, the two pins that are abutting my property on the backside, or my northern side, are not reflective of the eastern and western boundary. That's the only question I had.
Okay. But we wouldn't be able to answer that.
Right.
That's something you should address with the surveyor.
Okay, so that's different form, but thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody else wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anyone in opposition? Very good. In that case, we'll take a motion to close the hearing on this particular item. Can I have a motion from one of the members? By Mr. Carroll, is there a second?
A second.
Ms. Doolin? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. Moving on to petition number two. 2325 Elm Street, petition of Armander and Ranjit Batra seeking a site plan review and variance of Section 4.2 of the overall lot coverage from the required 25% to 27.7% in order to construct a front porch and garage overhang incidental to a single-family dwelling located in an RS4 zone. Hardship listed is health and safety of elderly parents.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Armander Batra for 2325 Elm Street, requesting the board to give us a variance for 2.7%, so we can construct a front porch for our elderly parents. They're quite elderly, they cannot, we don't want them to go on the street, to fall and, you know, get hurt.
Mm-hmm.
So we want something so they can sit in the porch and enjoy their fresh air and, like, you know, everything. And we are still, like, within the limits, but lot coverage is, like, 2.7 extra, we seek. And we have support letters from the neighbors, which we already submitted. We also have approval from the historical division, which is on file also. So everything is in order, that's up to you.
Just a quick.
Ms. Doolin, go ahead.
You do have approval from the historical society?
Yes.
Okay. I didn't see that in the.
I emailed that one.
I'm sorry.
The approval from the historic.
Yes, we, we have his certificate of mailings that he submitted to us already. Initial approval for the construction of the house from the historic commission, and he went back and had the plans revised for the front porch, which the historic commission also approved.
Has construction begun? I'm a little, I was a little confused as I was reading that. Okay.
We already did the house, but not the porch.
Mm-hmm.
We're just, like, holding it now.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Doolin.
Yeah, I just realized now I realize construction is going on in the store.
Yeah, I was a little, I was a little confused myself. I was trying to figure this one out before. I did have one thing, other one, I think I wanted to note. Give me one second here. 2325. Okay, the chair wanted to acknowledge that we had received letters of support from Jacqueline Solvin, from Carol Profeta, from Jose Valera, and from Christine Rudney, as well as we have the supporting paperwork. Can you explain a little bit more about, I think one issue that we're going to come to grips with is, is the hardship that you're, that you're stating?
Yes, that's for the parents, because they're quite elderly, and we're building, like, an ensuite on the main floor for them. But right now, we have, like, a smaller porch, six by six, but we want that to extend, like, for the full width of the house, so they can sit outside and, you know, can walk over there. My father and mother, they can barely can walk, so we don't want them to go walk on the street.
Mm-hmm.
They're quite elderly. So for their safety and health reason, we want, they can get some fresh air, and they can sit out, and, you know. That's the hardship we asking for.
Ms. Rudney? Sorry, Ms. Doolin, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm confused. You, you're building a two-story house now?
Yes.
So this is a hardship just for the porch?
Yes, just for the porch, for the parents.
So the house has already been approved, and that's under construction?
No, house, we already started the construction.
Right, that's under construction now?
Yeah, under construction right now.
And that got approved, but now?
Yeah.
Okay. And you had to get an amendment for, or, excuse me?
Yeah.
Variance for the, for the porch, and the walkway? Okay.
If you look at the site plan, you, we are still, like, within the limits, the setback, set limits.
Oh, thanks. Is that a one-car garage, or two?
Single-car garage. Because of the lot coverage, that's what we allowed, so we just, like, you know, the wear line, so we have a single garage only.
Okay. Sorry, thank you.
Our whole family lives over here, me, my brother, my both the sisters, brother is over here, too, but they don't have, like, their house is like this, so they cannot even go out of the house when they are here. So they live with, my brother or with us, they're gonna live. And we are moving from Canada over here, just for the parents, so they can live with us. So the whole family can be here.
Just continuing the line of question, 'cause the, the finding of hardship is gonna be central to the commission's decision, and hardship, we can explain it, it's more of, it's not so much the personal hardship, but a hardship regarding the land or the way that the construction would have to be placed. So I was just wondering, is there a way, is this required by code in order for you to encroach further into the percentage, or the property as, as in here, or is there any way that it could have been accomplished to conform to the, to the required dimensions of the property?
No, we cannot, because we are right on the dot at 25% for the existing building.
Mm-hmm.
So this has to be extra, because the parents, when they looked at, we, like, got the approval very fast, and by the time I told my parents, they said, oh, you know, they were little kid, what we gonna do? We don't wanna walk on the street.
Mm-hmm.
So anything else you guys can do. Then this thing came into our mind, 'cause we can build a, like, full porch in the front, on the stairs, like, you know? So it's like a six by 20 feet or 25 feet, I believe, so it's enough for them to walk on it.
And is it steps, or are there ramps, anything?
In the future, we're gonna build ramp. Right now, they can climb steps, like, two, we have only two steps.
Mm-hmm.
So it's not like, you know, big steps. So, like, in the future, if we need, we can build a ramp, but not right now. It's not needed, only two steps.
Mm-hmm.
So that's not the thing we need, like, you know, right way, any ramp or anything.
Okay. Questions from commissioners? Mr. Poison?
So you'll, you are the surveyor, we'll be able to get that gentleman who asked if those pins were, the guy that was up here before asking about the pins. So the guy who did the surveyor, or you, can answer them?
That's a different, that's a different petition.
No, that's a different.
That's the previous one, Wigwam Lane.
Okay.
Sorry. Any other questions from members regarding this one, which is Elm Street? Okay. Thank you very much, sir. We'll take, you can sit down, we'll just take public comment, if any. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak in favor of this petition? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Hello, everyone. My name is Armander Batra, and it's my elder brother. So the only reason he moved here, because of the family. We are four siblings, you know, brother, sister, so, and the parents also want to live with us. And little bit, a problem in my house because of the stairs and all, so it's really appreciated if you can really look into it, and give approval for the porch, so they can enjoy the, you know, summer weather, and they can walk a little bit around. So it'll be good with the family favor. Thank you very much.
Okay, can you just give us your address? I didn't quite catch that.
My address is 80 Salem Road, Trumbull, Connecticut.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else wish to speak in favor of the petition? Anybody in favor? Please come forward, give us your name and address, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrea Lynch. I live at 38 Agresta Terrace, Stratford, and welcome from Canada, 'cause I'm from Canada, Toronto, myself. Welcome. I agree with helping their parents, they are gonna get older. The two steps for elderly, you know, in a certain age, it is hard for them, when they get older, health-wise, physically, not able to climb up two stairs. So the ramp or anything that they need in the future can be accessible, and hopefully you will take that in gratitude. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak in favor? Anybody wish to speak in opposition to the petition? Anybody in opposition? If not, we'll take a motion to close this item. Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We have one further petition on here, it's 30 Ferry Boulevard, petition of Daniel Krasinski, appealing a cease and desist order issued by the zoning enforcement officer. Mr. Brennan?
This item is gonna be deferred to our February meeting, with the hope that the issue is resolved before that.
Okay, can I have a motion to defer this to February 6th, please? By Ms. Cleary, second. By Ms. Doolin, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. I'll take a motion to close our public hearing. By Ms. Cleary, second. Mr. Carroll, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We are, public hearing is recessed at 7:19, which means we'll go right back into our administrative agenda. Okay, we've already taken care of the election of the chairman, temporary chairman. So items listed on the public hearing agenda, January 2024. We'll take a motion to take number one off the table, 249 Wigwam Lane.
I make a motion to take it off the table.
Motion to take off the table by Ms. Cleary, is there a second? Mr. Carroll, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. As this is our first petition for this mostly new board, I know we appreciate the service of our two alternates, who are more experienced here. Mr. Florak, would you please just brief the new members as the thresholds and the standards for their decisions before we start going through the items?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. So when you're deliberating as to whether to approve a variance or not approve it, in order for it to be approved, you have to be able to find a hardship. And that hardship that's necessary for a variance is a kind of a multifaceted definition. It's gotta be that because of some unique feature of this particular parcel of land, not shared in common with any other lot in the area, the requested variance is necessary because to do what they wanna do would be exceptionally difficult in, in a hardship. Now, hardships are not financial in nature, so in sitting here, you will hear from time to time that, well, I, I can't utilize the value of my property fully unless I can get this variance. That's not a hardship. A financial hardship is not the kind of hardship that the law requires, nor is a personal hardship, a hardship that, while very sympathetic in nature, has nothing to do with the land itself, okay? It has to do with the family circumstances. Those aren't the type of hardships that are considered by the law to be valid in order to approve a variance. There are some other exceptions to it, which are less common, and if they come up in any petitions, we'll, we'll go through it at that point in time. But that is basically what has to be found by you in order to approve or grant a variance. Now keep in mind that you are the arbiter or the determination, determinator of what the facts are. So you study what's before you, you look at the maps, you draw your own conclusions as to whether there's a hardship or not. The statute does require, however, a couple of things with respect to a variance and a hardship. One, it requires that if a variance is gonna be approved, that the motion that's made and voted on contain the reason for approving it. In other words, what the hardship is. And secondly, requires four votes to approve a hardship. Anything else, Mr. Chairman?
I thank you. Members, do you have questions for Mr. Florak? Okay. Okay, so then we have 2249 Wigwam Lane in front of us, and generally with, for the benefit of new members, generally what I would ask is just we make a motion to approve so that we can begin debate, and we'll discuss it through, and move forward.
I'd like to make, make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Ms. Cleary, is there a second? A second by Mr. Carroll. Okay, discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. President.
Since I was late saying it before, I, I just hope that somebody can answer that gentleman before, and just the location of those pins, just so it's clear of where that line is, and if they were the corners or not. That's.
If you look at the site plan, where our property is on the corner, which is 249, if you look on the south side, Greg is, it's Lot 2, and I think there was, like, eight or nine lots around us, we're on a corner lot. On the very far opposite side of our house is where his property backs up on our line. It goes on a diagonal. What he, what he thought, or whatever the process was over the years, he thought the line went off a little bit, and it was angled the other way. So he thinks that the line should be off a little bit, and I tried to explain it to him, and I showed him the site plan and everything.
Right.
You know, I said, you have to go give him our survey, or to, you know, do your own plot plan, you know, I showed him my plan, what it was. But it's just literally the total opposite of the land, it's over 300 feet away from the addition. And he's just talking about a little thing, and he's talking only about a couple of feet.
Right, and he still was in favor of the proposal?
Yeah, he was in favor, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you.
He just wanted to.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, let me, let me start off with some of the discussion here. I, I think what's come out in, in the public hearing and within the materials that were provided, is sort of the unique aspects of the, of the lot, and I'm familiar with the location here, it's close to my district, and it is a corner, it's farm, farmland, I guess, as, as well, which is kind of, kind of a, a unique situation, and it seems to pre-exist zoning when we were talking about 1903. Our regulations, I think, only go back until the 60s, 50s, 60s, something like that. So it does appear, at least in my opinion, to be sort of this non-conforming lot, which appears to be, meet this, the statutory definition of required for the variance, so, at least in my opinion, it does seem to conform to, conform to this. And the discussion previous, or the remarks from the, from Mr. Brennan indicate that it, it does not appear to cause any major issues. I've not heard any commentary in opposition to it, only the clarification that we had there, so I'm inclined to support approving the variance. Discussion continue?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Carroll?
The only issue and question is setback, and this new structure will not encroach any closer to the street than the existing houses now.
No, 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 no. It's actually stepping in, if you look at the plan, it's actually stepping in six inches away from the road. There's a step back in the new addition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carroll. Further discussion, members? Okay, let's proceed to a vote. Ms. Cleary?
To approve.
Okay, Ms. Doolin?
I vote to approve.
Mr. Carroll?
I vote to approve.
Mr. Poison?
Approve.
The chair votes yes as well, and motion carries 5-0. The variance is agreed to. Okay. Item two, we'll take a motion to take it off the table.
Make a motion to remove item two off the table.
Okay, motion by Ms. Doolin, second by Ms. Cleary, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. If we could ask for a motion to approve so that we can begin discussion. Motion approved by Mr. Carroll, second.
Second.
By Ms. Cleary, the motion's been made in second, we can now have discussion. Ms. Doolin?
I do not believe there is a hardship. There are sidewalks in the area, so the parents can certainly walk on sidewalks.
Mm-hmm. Further discussion? Mr. Carroll?
Mr. Chairman, I do agree that it, I think it adds value and appearance to the home, but again, I, I would have to agree that I, I have a hard time finding hardship.
Unfortunately, I must, must agree, I'm not seeing that there is a hardship, at least within the definition, I certainly, and then, I hate to have one of these so, so early in the term, but I, I, I see the need for it. I see the, what the family's trying to do, and certainly, I, I feel that they, they definitely are trying to, you know, make situation better for their parents. Unfortunately, I can't. Unfortunately, I can't come to a realization that a hardship has been proven that would, that I could concede meets the, the definition that we have to, we have to find here. I'm not sure if there's some other way this can be reconfigured or if there's anything that, I mean, it's not quite an ADA or anything like that. I can't think of a reason or a code compliance issue. I'm really struggling to find something that I can latch on to, to, to grant that. I don't know if anybody has any further comments. Ms. Cleary?
I do think it's a positive that the Historic Society didn't mix this.
They did not. Yeah, that is, that's true. Something you can definitely consider.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I would like to second what Ms. Cleary just mentioned because it takes a lot to get past the historic district, which is their job. And it is, I think duly noted that it passed the historic district.
Any further comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I, I guess my only other concern would be there was mention of possibly a future handicap ramp. And I don't know how that would be accomplished without further encroaching on area coverage.
So when it comes to ADA accessibility, there's state statute that requires towns to have a certain expectation to, for them to be able to install them while, whether it's encroaching into a setback or going over the lot coverage. Although it needs to be reasonable, it needs to be built to ADA specs.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could the applicant maybe describe what the ramp would look like if it's needed down the road? Is it possible for that? Is it okay if he still speaks?
Yeah, I believe you can still ask, ask that question.
If you'd like to answer that question?
For the ramp?
Yeah, if, if the ramp is needed down the road, where would it be located? How steep would it be? How far?
It's just in the front where the stairs, steps would be. It's just, we're not gonna encroach anything more. So it's, because it's just two steps, so it's not gonna be a big ramp. So preferably it's gonna just like, you know, within that thing, we can make the ramp.
Thank you.
So we're not gonna encroach more or come to you guys, give us more variance now.
Okay, thank you.
Because if they're like four or five steps, then you need a longer ramp. It's only two steps. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any further comments or questions?
Question for the attorney, if I may.
Please proceed, sir. Mr. Florak?
Just going through all the possible answers that we can have to the applicants of approved or denied, is there, is there levels of denying with prejudice, without prejudice? Can you just explain those for us?
Yes, I mean, you, you have the ability to deny something without prejudice. See, in your, in your rules and regs and I don't think so much in state statute, in your rules and regs. If you disapprove a variance application, absent some changes, the applicant can't come back with the same petition for a certain period of time. But if you deny something without prejudice, it does allow the applicant to come, to make a certain change and to come back before this board seeking the same approval. So yeah, there are different levels of denials.
So just to clarify, if we deny with prejudice, then they can come back?
If you deny with prejudice, they have to wait a certain period of time. And I can't remember whether that's a year or six months, but it's a certain period of time. If you deny without prejudice, that means it's denial, we can't do it as presently configured. But if some changes are made, come in, talk to Mr. Brennan or Mr. Habanski, maybe some changes can be made. Then you can bring the petition back before this board.
Thank you.
Is that something you were interested in pursuing, Mr. Poyzan?
I, I was going to make that motion, yes.
Okay, I think procedurally, if that's something, I have a motion on the floor to approve. If that, how, just want to make sure I do this procedurally correct.
So whoever made the motion to approve and seconded it would withdraw their motion in their second and allow Mr. Poyzan to proceed on his motion.
You're not gonna withdraw? Okay, all right. So unfortunately, we have a motion to approve on the floor, which has to be voted on. So I'll take a roll call vote. Ms. Cleary?
I approve.
Ms. Doolan? Mr. Carroll?
Approve.
I will vote to deny. So it's three in favor, two opposed, and it, motion fails.
It requires four votes.
I said motion fails.
Right, correct.
Yep. Okay, three to two. Okay, moving on to approval of the minutes of the December 5th, 2023 meeting. There is one issue that it was in Mr. Brennan's message to the members that because that was, this was the meeting of the former commission. And you're required to, only the members that actually sat in that, in that meeting, Ms. Doolan and Ms. Cleary, would be able to vote unless members had actually watched the video of that meeting, then they would be able to approve. So I did watch it this morning. Mr. Carroll or Mr. Poyzan, did you have a chance to watch the video of the previous meeting? You did not? Okay, so then there's four of us that can actually vote on the motion to approve the minutes. So I can take a motion to approve? Ms. Doolan, is there a second? Ms. Cleary, any discussion, any changes? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Carries four one and I forget who it was. Who was it that did not see it? Mr. Carroll had not seen it? Okay, so it's four one, okay, thank you.
Because it wouldn't be four to one, it'd be four, one abstention.
It would be four to zero.
Right, one abstention.
Four to zero with one abstention. Thank you, sorry. Okay, campsite plan review, Mr. Brennan? Erosion, sediment control. Okay, members' concerns and comments. Generally, this is an area for the benefit of new members, at least on the, the previous land use boards that I've been on. If there's any zoning concerns that come up in your districts or any issues that you see clarification from one of our staff members, that would be an appropriate time to bring it up. If not, we pass over that. Okay. And other items on our agenda here is discussion of the, changing the ZBA meetings from 7:00 PM to 6:00 PM in order to be consistent with other land use boards. This is something Mr. Habanski had brought to my attention. Apparently, the Planning Commission and the Zoning Commission have moved to six. And he asked me to consider the same. Six PM for me is usually still working time, so it puts me in a little bit of a position. But certainly I'd be happy to, you know, hear what the rest of the members' concerns are. But I also would want to see what Commissioner Sweeley and the new member TBD, what their feeling is as well. So I'm happy to hear what, anybody else has any thoughts on this, but I think we would not make a decision until we have the fully constituted board. Okay. There's no other business before the commission. We can take a motion to adjourn. Motion adjourned by Ms. Doolan, second by Ms. Cleary. All in favor say aye. Opposed, no. Carries unanimously. We're adjourned at 7:39 PM. And we'll see everybody on February 6th. Thank you very much for coming.